All right, everybody, welcome to a special called session of the Athens Clark County Mayor and Commission here at five thirty ish on the fifteenth of April, two thousand twenty-one. First order of business is to ask the clerk to please call roll.
Davenport. Parker. Davenport here. Okay. Parker. Link.
Here.
Wright.
Present.
Denson.
Here.
Hool.
Presente.
Edwards.
Here.
Myers.
Here.
Thornton.
Here.
Handy. I think I heard him.
Yeah, Commissioner Hamby is here. Yes, ma'am.
We have a call.
All right. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Attorney Drake, are we considering this under suspension of rules?
Uh, yes, sir, we can do that. I think we'll need to.
I'll entertain a motion for suspension of rules for this special called session.
Move to suspend the rules.
Second.
All right, I've got a motion from Commissioner Edwards and a second from Commissioner Denson. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, so we have just a single item, and because this is a zoning related item, we do have live public input from the chamber. Public information staff, I know earlier there was no one there. Does that remain the case?
Yes, there is nobody but me here at this point, but I'm available for questions.
All right, I appreciate it. And Director Brad Griffin is in the chamber all alone. All right, Attorney Drake, if you could just outline for us the nature of this item, which is a version of which we've seen before regarding a cell tower on Nowhere Road, eight fifty-five Nowhere Road.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Oh, we are here this evening to provide for compliance with an order that was issued on March twenty-six, two thousand twenty-one by the Honorable Clayland, U.S. District Court Judge for the Middle District of Georgia, finding that Athens Clark County's decision to deny Verizon's special use permit to locate a cell tower at eight fifty-five Nowhere Road was not supported by substantial evidence. This order also granted Verizon an injunction requiring Athens Clark County to issue the special use permit to allow for the location of the cell tower at eight fifty-five Nowhere Road within twenty-one days of the order, which date falls on tomorrow, Friday, April sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one. Accordingly, to provide for compliance with the court's order, an ordinance to approve the special use permit for a wireless telecommunications facility at eight fifty-five Nowhere Road, Athens, Georgia is before the commission this evening for its approval. Thomas Mitchell, our outside legal counsel, was able to successfully get Verizon to agree to the following conditions, which have been added to the ordinance. One, the size of the gravel turnaround area in the tower compound shall be reduced and limited to twenty feet by twenty-five feet on the northward side of the compound. The turnaround area will remain as shown for the area in front of the gate. And condition two, twelve additional trees shall be planted along the southeast side of the compound to provide additional screening. Mr. Mitchell was also able to get Verizon to agree to waive its right to seek to have the unified government pay Verizon's costs in bringing the action in exchange for unified government's agreement not to appeal the lower court's decision. Accordingly, in addition to the ordinance to approve the special use permit, a resolution is also before the commission this evening for its approval to authorize the mayor to execute a settlement agreement memorializing the aforementioned agreements between the parties for the court. I'll read the ordinance now. An ordinance to amend the code of Athens Clark County, Georgia with respect to special use approval of a wireless telecommunications facility in the AR Agricultural Residential District on an approximate zero point five five seven acre portion of a parcel of land located at eight fifty-five Nowhere Road comprised of thirty-four acres in total and for other purposes.
Uh, thank you, Attorney Drake. I appreciate it. And this project is in Commissioner Denson's district, although it's right across the street from Commissioner Thornton's and adjacent to kind of much of the terrain. For commission watchers, you know that our districts are very curiously shaped, and so Commissioner Denson has what I'd call the Nowhere Road isthmus as part of his district, sort of separated from the rest of his district by Sandy Creek. So Commissioner Denson, I'm going to ask for input from you first.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. And while this is not the outcome, the situation I was hoping that we would be in, it is the reality that we have here. And with this settlement, I feel like we should go ahead and move forward. It's inevitable what's going to end up happening here, and I hope in the future that we can have from the outright better discussions with community members when these kind of projects are going on to get more input. And but saying all of that, I go ahead and make a motion for us to approve this.
And accept the resolution as well, is that correct?
Yeah, if we can do it as one motion, then I'm happy doing both at the same time, sure.
Is that acceptable, Attorney Drake?
Let's just do them separately, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, that's fine. All right, so motion for approval of the ordinance. Right here, second?
Second.
All right, I've got a motion from Commissioner Denson and a second from Commissioner Myers on the floor. Commissioner Thornton, given that this is adjacent to so much of your district, I want to give you an opportunity for any input that you'd like to provide, too.
Um, thank you, Mayor. Um, I did talk to Commissioner Denson today and some of the constituents in my district that had concern, that have, that still have concerns. Um, I do appreciate the effort that we as a commission, um, listen to constituents. Um, I thought it was bad before, and I still think it's bad, and I probably won't be voting for it. I hope the judge does not come and lock me up for not voting for it, but, um, I think I'm going to, um, and even talking to my constituents, I mean, they have been so, it's not like I feel threatened or that, or they feel that I've disappointed them. They know we have done the best we can as a commission on this. Um, I just think that we, you know, there are some things that we could have done a little differently, especially knowing about other areas that could have been, um, options. So, um, yeah, that's where I am right now, Mayor. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any further input on this item before I call for a vote? Commissioner Hool.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I guess I'm curious if the attorney could explain what would happen if we voted no on this.
If the commission voted no, the court would issue an order finding the commission to be in contempt, and I imagine it would have some type of a monetary per day. It could have a monetary per day penalty, or it might require me to appear in court and answer and explain, but I think you have you held in contempt is what would happen.
Hmm. Okay. Now, excuse me, Attorney Drake, now, I'm voting no. Are you telling me I may be held in contempt?
Uh, no, Commissioner, as long as the full body passes, it will be in compliance.
Okay, okay.
Yes, yep.
Trying to keep everybody out of the pokey.
Yeah, I guess I find myself not feeling very good about this in any way. Uh, you know, we're certainly being bullied by a mega corporation who's got an unimaginable amount of wealth and can just kind of come in and bulldoze through communities, and that's what this feels like. And I appreciate the work that's been done to try to get some concessions, but ultimately this does feel like we're being forced to do something on behalf of a very large corporation in spite of a unanimous opposition from this body and also most all the input we got from the public being in opposition, too. So I'd be curious to hear other colleagues' thoughts. I mean, I don't want to waste money in court on this, but there's something that just in my guts doesn't feel right about voting yes. I mean, this seems kind of like a farce to think that we're a body who's empowered by the, why vote at all if we really have no choice in the matter? I guess that's kind of how I'm feeling.
I would note, Commissioner Hool, that the rationale for the Middle District of Georgia's decision, you know, has its underlying roots in federal telecommunications law, and so certainly, I think among the lessons learned for us that, you know, we've learned in the past in other contexts and certainly notable to the public is simply the power of lobbying in crafting the way that federal legislation works. And so if you don't think that your vote counts, and if you don't think that members of Congress are making decisions that are impactful on communities, I'll just abuse you of that notion right here. Any further input?
I just had a quick thing, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
You know, one, one idea throughout some months ago when we were first talking about this is putting forward an ordinance from this body that would require the cell tower builders to camouflage the towers to look like trees. That's something that's done across the state in different municipalities, and I think that, you know, there's an opportunity there. I think there may have been one here as well. Early on, Verizon was interested in building a tree tower here that can kind of be lost in the landscape. So, um, you know, there is some influence we can have on the aesthetic design of our built environment and requiring these corporations to camouflage their infrastructure so it's not just a metal phallus in the middle of the rural area. So something, um, you know, maybe, maybe it could go to LRC or GOC. I don't know, Mr. Mayor, but we're probably going to see more towers coming. So, thanks.
Thanks, Commissioner. I'll say there are some other somewhat comparable community questions around signage and lighting that, um, that I've considered packaging as a committee assignment, so this is, this is helpful to hear.
Mayor, I would like to say that, um, um, I do have mixed feelings about this because, you know, this, you know, this is economic development, this is growth and everything. But, and I know that we cannot change laws that are on the books. I think this law was on the book, I believe, during one of our meetings since nineteen sixty-six. Um, so, um, I understand, you know, the law and things on the books, but I also understand that every law on the, or I believe, I believe that every law on the book doesn't necessarily mean it's right. So for me, it's my personal conviction, not, I didn't call nobody to lobby about this. You know, I appreciate my constituents' understanding and, you know, and they thanked me and everything. This is a personal thing for me. Every law in the book does not make it right, and if I keep, and if I keep pretending or going along with stuff, we'll never get it right. Somewhere along the line, somebody needs, we need to start getting stuff right on, 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 on law. And I know this is not a local thing, but it's just my personal commitment where I am at. So I want, I want that to be really clear. I have no problems with Verizon. They found a way to make it happen with an old law, but sooner or later, we got to me, if it's not right, I need to say something and, and keep it moving.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Denson.
Thank you, Mayor. And just to move this through me, obviously, I think I appreciate the, uh, this commission and so many commissioners, definitely Commissioner Thornton, uh, taking a stand here and trying to really voice the concerns of constituents and try to make sure they're heard, I think, especially from a part of the county that maybe feels, uh, they haven't been heard for a long time. And I feel like we've really done what we could to push back against this. Unfortunately, uh, we're definitely the David in this situation trying to push back here, and we find ourselves in this situation. And I, I now, I mean, I just look at this at some point, that it is very valid for us to fight these fights that need to be fought for our constituents, but at some point there's a breaking point where the cost, the legal cost, the cost to our government for just, if we're getting fined daily, being kept in contempt, that at some point there's a, there's a point of diminishing returns, and I don't think it's, um, it's, it's, it's a very smart move for us to be using up our taxpayers' dollars fighting a fight that we know we're not going to fight further. And we definitely gave it, gave it, gave it a good shot. Um, and, you know, at some point, we have to definitely pick our battles or what's going to be worthwhile, and I think we have on this. I've also talked to the constituents in this area. They kind of understand this situation. They're not happy with it. I'm not happy with it, but they understand the situation, the reality that we find ourselves in. And so I agree with Commissioner Thornton, we need to find ways that we can try to improve these laws on it. I do agree with Commissioner Hool that in a lot of ways, this, we don't really have a say in these situations, but there is a structure put in place to make it look like a local approval is necessary, but, um, but all that being said, you know, I think that at this point, we've passed the point of diminishing returns to keep fighting this, and at some point we have to start doing what's going to be right for our use of our tax dollars and use for our very limited constituents, uh, funding and resources. So that is why I'm advocating for us to go ahead and, and to pass this ordinance and the, and the resolution.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any final input before we call for a roll call vote? Commissioner Hool?
I guess I just feel compelled to share, to kind of piggyback on what you said earlier, Mayor Gritz. I mean, pretty dismal situation we find ourselves in, but those, uh, those elections really do matter, and, you know, with all the victories we get to celebrate, it's races like the one lost by Daniel Blackman by only a few votes that come to mind here, those Public Service Commission races and things where decisions around how this stuff works really matters. And, uh, yeah, I hope we as a body can find ways to continue to be part of the fight to make better policy happen on the levels above us so that we're not having to punch up so much to no avail. It's a, it's a pretty, pretty awful feeling thing to feel like we're having to vote yes in order to not waste taxpayer money by futilely paying fines to be in contempt.
Yeah, we may have a couple of other viable sources for those funds indeed. All right, Madam Clerk, you would call a roll call vote, beginning with Commissioner Denson?
Denson?
Yes.
Hool?
Yes.
Edwards?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Thornton? No. Hamby?
No.
Davenport?
Yes.
Did Parker come in?
Uh, no, ma'am, she did not.
Okay, Link?
Yes.
Okay, seven yes, two no.
I'd like to vote. I'd like to vote, I'm a yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, right. Right. Correct, correct, right, yes. Okay. Seven yes, two no.
All right. Thank you, Madam Clerk, and thanks, everyone, for fighting the good fight.
The resolution, Mr. Mayor, real quick, separate on it.
Yes, resolution, motion for the resolution.
To move.
Second.
All right, I've got a motion from Commissioner Wright, second from Commissioner Denson. Madam Clerk, if you'd just do a roll call vote for that as well, beginning with Commissioner Wright.
Wright?
I wanted to do that so I didn't get missed. Thank you, I'm a yes.
Denson?
Yes.
Hool?
Yes.
Edwards?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Thornton?
No.
Hamby?
No.
Davenport?
Yes.
Did Parker come in?
Uh, no, ma'am, she did not.
Okay, Link?
Yes.
Okay, seven yes, two no.
I'd like to vote. I'd like to vote, I'm a yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, right. Right. Correct, correct, right, yes. Okay. Seven yes, two no.
All right. Thank you, Madam Clerk, and thanks, everyone, for fighting the good fight.
The resolution, Mr. Mayor, real quick, separate on it.
Yes, resolution, motion for the resolution.
To move.
Second.
All right, I've got a motion from Commissioner Wright, second from Commissioner Denson. Madam Clerk, if you'd just do a roll call vote for that as well, beginning with Commissioner Wright.
Wright?
I wanted to do that so I didn't get missed. Thank you, I'm a yes.
Denson?
Yes.
Hool?
Yes.
Edwards?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Thornton? No. Hamby?
No.
Davenport?
Yes.
Link?
Yes.
Yes. Seven yes, two no.
All right, thank you, everyone. Consider a motion to adjourn the special called session so we can enter our work session.
To move.
I've got a motion from Commissioner Davenport, second from Commissioner Link. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so special called session is adjourned, and we will now move into our work session where we just have a single item, which is a very preliminary, high-level overview of what we know already about the American Rescue Act and the legislative language and dollar figures, we believe, attached to this, and we'll talk a little bit about process in the months and, and in fact, even years moving forward around these federal funds that are going to be coming to the unified government as well as some associated things. So, Manager Williams, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor, and if you would, could you allow me to share? Thank you. All right. Good evening, everybody.
She'll be available now.
Okay, well, good evening, everybody, and just to reiterate, the mayor did ask that, you know, we begin this discussion, and I think it's in, I know many of you I've been in contact with have been reading about, just like all of us trying to figure out what exactly is going on, what the guidance is. There's any number of associations out there, including the Georgia Municipal Association, the Association of County Commissioners of Georgia, the National Association of Counties, the National League of Cities, there's all sorts of webinars going on that some of y'all are attending. I think the U.S. Conference on Mayors as well, I think Commissioner Thornton forwarded some stuff this morning. Uh, so we're all trying to figure out what's going on. One thing's for sure, there's some funds coming this way, and I think you agree it behooves us to go ahead and begin talking about that even at a high level. And so I know there had been some questions about, are we trying to figure out what we're doing tonight? I would say, no, we don't have the treasury guidance yet. We'll get into that, but we figured at the very high level, let's start the discussion and hear some feedback from you and progress this process forward. So tonight, very briefly, general overview of the fund of the program, what we're keying on, y'all, in the absence of treasury guidance, is the actual legislation that passed and the eligible uses that were enumerated there. I'll go over those. Touching on some potential priorities that you've already been discussing for some time now, and how do those fit, some near-term process considerations as we wait, other possible sources of funding. The funding that Unified Government is receiving is not the only funding bucket that's out there, so we'll cover some of those. The mayor wants to discuss how this juxtaposes with the, you know, imminent FY22 budget process and any next steps, and of course, all along the way, y'all, this is a conversation for us all to engage in.
Manager Williams, I have a quick question. Has this slide deck been sent to us?
No, ma'am, I just finished putting it together this afternoon.
Okay, I'm looking at this on my phone. I'm unable to get it on in my laptop, so if there's any way somebody could send it to me, um, and, you know, soon. I have a hard time reading it on my phone.
No problem, I was going to do that immediately afterwards. Give me one second, I can do that very simply.
I'm sorry.
No, no, I apologize. I meant to do it right before we started, but...
Go ahead and send it to all of us, Plaine, just so readers like me.
Absolutely. Just give me one second and I'll hit send. All right, should be coming your way. Uh, and just to, again, reiterate, this wasn't, you know, trying to withhold any information. I really appreciate that y'all have been sharing freely what you're finding out. I even, I even attended a webinar just at two o'clock today, just trying to find out what the latest information was. So this is just the latest and greatest, and it's so high level, and I don't expect there to be any decisions made, so, you know, I apologize for it not going out earlier. So what we know is that, you know, the Congress has appropriated these funds, and like most of these federal funding programs, the Treasury, the Office of the Treasury, Treasury Department, will provide the explicit guidance, but we're going to talk about what the legislation said. Local governments across the country will receive up to a hundred and thirty billion dollars. The indicators we've received would indicate fifty-seven million as part of this local government program would come to Athens Clark County, Unified Government. There's two tranches of funding, half of the funding would come this year, and the remaining half no earlier than twelve months after we receive that. So within the next few months after the treasury guidance, we hope to receive some of the funding and then the rest of it the following year. And in all cases, the deadline to spend the funds is going to be the end of the calendar year of two thousand twenty-four. So in the legislation itself and pending treasury guidance, here's, there were four areas that it said that there are eligible uses for these local funds responding to the public health emergency, and this would be, you would recognize this as being very similar to what you did with the resiliency package in most cases, assistance to households, small businesses, nonprofits, and aid to impacted business and industry. Uh, the second one is one that's had a lot of conversation with you and with others about premium pay to eligible workers of the county, and eligible workers through the legislation means those that were needed to maintain continuity of operations of essential critical infrastructure sectors and additional sectors as each governor of the state may designate as critical to protect the health and well-being. So we may, we're going to be looking for some more definition on those as well, and there are some thresholds on the pay amounts that were in the legislation. Number three, yes?
Um, could you go back? Could you go back to your, the first slide? Not, not this slide, the one right before? No? This one?
Yes, ma'am.
I know, um, just for clarity, and maybe it's in a further slide, but I just want to, just for clarity for, for, for folk, when I looked at the national document, and Kelly explained it to me yesterday, but I think we all need to know this.
And in all cases, the deadline to spend the funds is going to be uh the end of the calendar year of 2024. So in the legislation itself and pending Treasury guidance, here's, there were four areas that it said that there are eligible uses for these local funds. Um, responding to the public health emergency and this would be uh, you you would recognize this as being very similar to what you did with the Resiliency Package in most cases. Uh, assistance to households, small businesses, nonprofits, and aid to impacted business and industry. Uh, the second one is one that's had a lot of uh conversation with you and uh with others about uh premium pay to eligible workers of the county. And eligible workers uh through the legislation means those that were needed to maintain continuity of operations of essential critical infrastructure sectors. And additional sectors is as each governor of the state may designate as critical to protect the health and well-being. So we may, we're going to be looking for some more definition on those as well. And there are some uh thresholds on the pay amounts uh that were in the legislation. Uh, number three, yes.
Um, could you go back? Could you go back to your, the first slide? Not, not this slide, the one right before? No? This one?
Yes, ma'am.
I know, um, just for clarity, uh, um, and and maybe it's in a further slide, but I just want to, just for for clarity, for 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 folk. When I looked at the national um allotment and Kelly explained it to me yesterday, but I I think we all need to know this. When we're talking about 60 million that is targeted for Athens. Um, but if you look on the uh allotment, it says 35 uh plus. Kelly, can you tell um the listeners and commission exactly what you told me yesterday?
I I'd be glad to, Commissioner. So um because we're a unified government, we actually get a couple of different kinds of allotments. So in some of our neighboring communities, for example, in say Jackson County that has several municipalities, those individual municipalities, Nicholson Commerce, Jefferson and so forth receive a municipal allotment and then Jackson County will receive a separate allotment because they're a county. Well, w- we are both. What we we are a city and a county and um under federal view, we're not just any city. We're what's termed an entitlement community. And and that's why we receive community development block grants directly, for example, uh versus very smaller municipalities that receive those um through uh through an application to a regional commission. So that means we're receiving that approximately $35 million in our role as an entitlement community city. And then separately, the uh the balance as a county, as Clark County. So both those things layered together uh will uh approximately add up to this amount. Does that help?
Uh, thank you. I, yeah, I, yeah, thank you. Uh, because, yeah, thank you.
Yep.
And of course, we will talk about other potential pots of money here uh later in the presentation. So moving on to the the third and fourth eligible uses of the funds according to the, just coming straight out of the bill that was approved. This next one is 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 um more than an activity, more of a reimbursement definition. And that is, you know, if you've, if there was a reduction in revenue due to the public health emergency, then, you know, that amount of funds could be you know, used. Uh, the county could use that uh, you know, for some operations to make up for that loss of revenue. And then the fourth one is make necessary investments in water, sewer, or broadband infrastructure. So uh, community relief, employee pay, uh, reduction in revenue, uh, necessary investments in infrastructure. Those are the four eligible uses. And of course, we're awaiting some more specific guidance on that. So uh, you know, again, tonight was not intended to come to any hard and fast decisions, but just uh, you know, it makes sure that we're all on the same page and that the public's aware. Uh, so just talking about general potentials, uh priorities and focus. Uh, you know, some of the things that we've done here successfully and some of the things that occur to to staff, uh, just as potential targets. You know, for COVID relief, homelessness and eviction assistance and you know, one thing that you've talked about as a group, but not uh any formal action. Uh, you know, the project reset, which is where a program through magistrate court for eviction assistance. Uh, you know, staffs approved an RFP where we could go through that process and have that all teed up when the funds come in to do things like that. Workforce development, business grants, of course, your work through the Resiliency Package in assisting local businesses through the Joint Development Authority. You know, all those things that we had to set up, those structures that took so much time seemingly, but actually were done quite quickly for for what was going on. You know, we've got some good processes in place that we could leverage further. Rent and utility relief. Uh, the employee pay, we need to find out more about, but um that would basically be you know, what what we've heard throughout the pandemic is bonus pay for those that were having to continue to work. You know, uh, you know, uh, throughout the pandemic at their workstations. And we have to wait on some more definition there. We talked about the revenue loss and what relief that could come. Uh, you know, from the FY22 budget discussion, Big Rocks presentation, revenue loss that we have experienced in the last couple of years really relate to user fees, um fines and things of that nature. Uh, you know, the parking fees, the leisure services fees are some of the bigger losses that we've had. And 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 finance has already been working on detailing that, but we've not been told exactly what time period that that encapses, encapsulates. And then investment.
Any question on that?
Of course.
Um, and we might not have his answer, but for that, so those specific, those are uh, you know, some specific funds, the general fund, the parking revenue that, you know, that going to ADDA and and um that that built for in the hotel motel tax. If we were to do that part, do those funds still go out and are distributed the same way that they would be normally? Or would that money be going into the general fund to make up for the revenue? Or how would that work?
That's an excellent question. You're correct. We don't know quite yet. So I I could offer some speculation, but until we get that Treasury guidance, we're not entirely sure. But we can go ahead and run some analyses to understand the order of magnitude as we try and and as you'll see later, you know, begin to scope out what this might look like over the next few years. Uh, not unlike that we did with the Resiliency Package. Investment in infrastructure is fairly straightforward as we've talked about. Uh, the mayor and I have both discussed as as he has heard others across the country. Well, does this include stormwater? And I think that's something that's also uh being discussed as well.
Um, um, County Manager Williams.
Yes, ma'am.
And I want to um, I guess I'm a little sensitive, but and and you you have echoed um several times about the Resiliency Package. Actually, we did have a framework uh with the Prosperity Package, which then we flipped into the CARES Package. So we should have more than one model that we could um pull out once we get clearer um Treasury guidance and got, yeah, guidance than the Re- Resiliency Package. So I just want to put that out there that um we, through the COVID, we 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 did some amazing things. And 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 it, some of it, we could um we could replicate.
Totally agreed. And and I I'm glad to hear you say that, Commissioner Thornton, because there was some amazing work done. It's it's really, as you reflect on last year, uh, all the work that this body did and and staff uh and the community, for that matter. Uh, I only reference the Resiliency Package in that we actually created, I'm thinking of the actual chart that, you know, spanned the the year and we had the different types of areas that you wanted to fund with approximate amounts. And I'm kind of thinking ahead some point in the future that we would get to that, you know, a plan for the next three years about how how we spend these funds. And we'll talk more about that.
Can I chime in real quick?
Of course.
Um, so the the guidance says um public health response, you know, these funds can be used for that. I I really believe we need to focus on the very front end on vaccinating our community. We are under the state average, even though the the desire for vaccinations in our community is high. We've been denied resources by the state to keep up with the demand for vaccinations here. So I I believe we should use these funds off the bat to make our citizens safe as possible and stop the spread within our own community. And then we can focus on all this other relief, but first and foremost, get our people healthy.
Okay. Noted. And this is exactly the type of feedback we're hoping to generate tonight. So we're all hearing, you know, everybody's input and then we can progress to future discussions. So some of the priorities uh that you've worked on this year, of course, homelessness, affordable housing, workforce development, criminal justice reform, community engagement. These are four themes that have emerged from the several retreats that you've conducted this year. And of course, these are things that you want special emphasis on. Uh, and there's other things that the government's constantly working on at your direction. Uh, so just, you know, putting this back on the table as we think about a universe of potential uses for the funding, that this is part of the framework that we look towards. And as I was reflecting on these, you know, I thought about the comprehensive plan for the community that we just completed in 2018. Uh, and the red font is where those four heightened priorities I just shared that's been your themes through the last few retreats. You know, they are, they find an anchor in the comp plan. And so the comp plan, there's a lot of things there. Uh, and uh, we've always tasked ourselves with trying to remind ourselves, we do have a comp plan. We need to refer to it from time to time. And in there, there are specific goals, strategies, and initiatives. Uh, so not to say that we need to do everything in the comp plan, but but let's not forget that's there because um and I'll talk a little bit more about what the National League of Cities recommends that we do going forward. So just some high level process considerations. One of the things Commissioner Thornton sent out, and I appreciate Commissioner, all those that you shared and others. Uh, you know, what to do while we wait for Treasury guidance. And, you know, this is a generic series of things, actions that they are suggesting for municipalities, big and small across the country. But assess, and you know, we've talked about community assessments, a plan for recovery, internal, external stakeholders, resident voices, understanding needs, building connections, soliciting input, uh, and then making racial equity a part of the plan. So in the near term, what to do while we wait for Treasury guidance, you know, tonight starts that conversation, which it doesn't. Y'all have already started the conversation, but we're starting to formalize it by talking about it tonight. And so how do we go about talking about priorities, creating a process, marrying that to a timeline, and executing well to make sure that we leverage every single penny that the federal government's allowing Athens Clark County? Um, these are just, this is not a comprehensive list, just six or seven questions that just to think about when we start to get into identifying solutions. Um, because while it is in a staggering amount of money, uh, you know, in within three years, we will have spent it. And then the question is, what? What what will have, have we transformed the community or or segments of the community or certain issues that we've struggled long and mildly with? Uh, so what is the need, a root issue that we're trying to address? Is this a short term fix? Are we looking to change something uh forever or for the for a longer term? Uh, and thinking about things like in in creating uh spending some of the funds, are we creating a program that will continue on into the future and once the money's gone that we need to fund and how will we fund that? Or is it a project where we've got some one-time capital cost? There may be some maintenance with that as well.
Manager Williams, can I make a comment there?
Yes, sir.
I I think that's real important, especially the number three. I mean, I'm, I guess we ought to look at this as perhaps, uh, you know, every time we get to the budget, we talk about the fund balance and those are one-time expenses uh that 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 you can incur, but they aren't sustainable. So I I guess as we're looking at this, thinking in terms of um of what could be sustainable and not not add to the expenses that we already have. It's the way I'm looking at it. I could be, I could be wrong, but.
Well, I would agree with you and I I think this is very timely with our budget discussion as well. And um, you know, there there are, you know, y'all have created a a number of great initiatives now. Uh, we've got ongoing needs of life cycle and operational support. And how do we balance all that? This this will come and it's going to be really, really great, but it will create some lasting effects and how we manage them is going to be critical.
Uh, Blaine, I would like to also add, um, as a bullet, and I and I'm kind of thinking uh, and I keep looking at the three that are here. But we all should should be taking in consideration, what is going, what are we going to invest in that is going to also bring in revenue? Um, not just, um, you know, putting some things together for a short or long term. But what can we invest in that will generate revenue for years to come? Um, this, you know, I think that is one of the solutions to to end in poverty is because we do not uh calculate if we invest in, you know, I don't know, whatever. And it operates and it brings money back. I I I would hope that we would put something like that in one of these bullet bullet points.
Well, that's exactly the type of feedback. And and this is not an exhaustive list of questions. I have just a few more. But let's let's let y'all please present those because we will begin to create a framework by which we evaluate some of the priorities and 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 also, I I, you know, I think that this is much about education and awareness with our residents about how we deal with this and why why certain things were chosen and other things weren't.
And and with that, I think building on what Commissioner Hamby said too, and Commissioner Thornton, like, I also think there's like a kind of a a separate maybe area where there are some of those programs and projects that we have already committed ourselves to. Yet we have not yet found necessarily the funding that is going to be. So the big one that me I think about is broadband. Um, you know, we have a SLOSS project that has a a large investment, but we know it's not enough investment to actually pull off what we need to do. Uh, same thing with affordable housing, same thing with public transit, or even things like sidewalks and and our multi-use trail system. But I think of that also, that there's these things that while they might, they will be ongoing commitments and might have some maintenance involved there. We've kind of, through our promises to the community and also some of our funding in the past, we've already committed ourselves to those things.
Absolutely. There there's a ton of things that that we can refer to as as we go forward. And I'll, let me also recognize uh that this, you know, while I I invite feedback anytime, certainly tonight, I understand this is the first time that you're seeing this presentation and and we're just, I I want everybody to know, because I know you've probably heard this too, people are concerned that decisions are being made without people's input. And we are starting at a very high level and and tonight. And so uh, if I don't hear from you tonight, please email me or tell the mayor. We'll collect all the comments. We'll share them back out and we'll, you know, create next steps together. Just some other not exhaustive list, you know, again, how to fund the ongoing support of the program or project. Um, you know, we we talk about sustainability. What does that mean? It means different things to different people. Ultimately, there is this notion of a triple bottom line. You know, is this solution, project, program, is it socially, environmentally, economically beneficial or sustainable? So it, you know, as we talk about lenses at which to look at certain uh solutions and certainly racial equity would fall under that socially, um, you know, portion of the triple bottom line. Uh, we're just thinking of ways to to evaluate uh these priorities and programs, suggestions as they come down the line at some point in the future. And then uh we'll talk about these other uh program, other grant programs through this act, other pots of money, if you will. I understand the school district's getting uh some funds. And then there's a number of things that I'll talk about. Like, how do we make sure that our residents and partners and nonprofits are availing themselves with the programs and the funds that are out there? So we leverage every penny for the residents of Athens Clark County?
Um, Blaine, um, I'm sorry, um, County Manager Williams.
That's fine.
You said it verbally, but it would be nice to see it written under the triple bottom line. And you said this would include racial equity. I think it would be helpful for many of us to have it written out as you have the other three things.
Absolutely. And it it, as as part of this notion, Commissioner Thornton, it is clear, it is within the social umbrella, but that's we want to break this down even further. And that's what you're starting to do and we will, I'll definitely do that.
Can I add something? Oh, go ahead. Finish, finish what you have to say.
Go ahead, Commissioner Link, and then I'll jump in after you.
Um, yeah, I'm, my wheels are just spinning and I'm thinking of that kind of revenue generating, long-term investment and the concept of public-private partnerships and cooperative development that um we can be a partner in and investing these funds in the kind of projects in neighborhoods that are underserved, that don't necessarily get the attention of private developers. But if we can come in with that startup funding, pull the private investment in, pull local people in um with small-scale investments that can then build revenue for them. Um, you know, I think that's where you can get some of that long-term sustainability, workforce development, job growth, um, you know, real, real um ingrained community wealth.
I'm taking notes here. Excellent feedback.
Uh, just two things I wanted to share on this slide. So one is, you know, uh, dovetailing with what Commissioner Thornton was saying. If we're talking like hot, like high level, I think equity really is highest level thing, that we really need to be looking at everything through that lens. And I I think that's also what the Biden administration has intended with this money. I think Commissioner Thornton-
I think Commissioner Thornton, forget if it was by text or email, but shared one of the declarations that the Biden administration put out with their definition of how they're defining equity. I think that's a pretty good one to work from if we need to. But I really think that how we allocate these funds, that that should be held at the front every time. And the other thing I would like to ask about is, I'm so sorry, I'm a little brain foggy today for some reason, so I just had a brain fart, but I'll jump in in a second.
Okay. All right. Other potential sources of funding, and, you know, these are out there. Commissioner Thornton sent out some information from the Council of Mayors. There's a couple that we're aware of, that we've got some specific allocations. Home supplemental, so our home program, which is run through Housing and Community Development, which is funds that we use through our local housing partners to build more affordable housing in Athens-Cart County. And we understand we've got $2.5 million there to be spent by 2030. Supplemental public transportation allocation of about $7 million through this act. So this is separate and beyond the 57 million that we discussed earlier. This isn't a breakdown of the 57 million. Other possible sources that are out there, we understand that there's emergency rental assistance. More information to come. Homeowner assistance, a restaurant revitalization fund that during the first few weeks has some preferences for applicants there. Women, veterans, or socially, economically disadvantaged individuals. Mental health and substance abuse. Childcare and development block grant program. There's also some funding for childcare and childcare providers there.
Manager Williams, can I jump back in here?
Yes.
So with the mental health and substance use, there's a, I believe, built into this stimulus package is like a billion dollars for reimbursing programs for cahoots-style programs being built in communities. And it's not clear to me whether it has to be a state-level program that gets that 85% match, or if local programs can qualify as well. But I know that that's something that we've been talking about. And it sounds like there's money in this package. There's a bunch of articles about it that I can share forward if need be, that says 85% of the startup funds would be matched by the federal government if we got a program like that going. Do we have clarity yet on whether that has to be state-level or local? Or is that part of what we need more Treasury Department guidance on?
I don't have the clarity yet.
Okay.
But as y'all discover more information, please share that, and we'll compile it together.
And I remembered after my brain stopped working for a minute there, what I was going to ask on the previous slide, which was, you had mentioned nonprofits being able to apply. And I'm hoping that we can invest a bit in engaging with nonprofits to help them succeed in their application process. So especially when we're thinking about equity and trying to get applications from nonprofits who we know are doing the good work to be in their optimal state for those applications. You know, I think some of the lessons we've learned with some of these recent rounds of funding is that that's a place we might really need to invest.
Agreed. And that was something that we've talked about is, you know, what role, what resources can the unified government provide in helping to boost nonprofit capacity? You know, so that's another, I think that's a common need that we need to talk about further. Other programs that we understand that are out there are an extension of SNAP benefits. And y'all, this is not exhaustive. This is just what, you know, as we come across it. Additional WIC funding, senior nutrition, you know, other funding sources out there. Youth nutrition, nutrition for the homeless, funding for food banks, community partners. So I think a real challenge for all of us is there's not going to be a day certain when all of this comes out. You know, it's probably going to be staggered. And certainly, to optimize the funds out there, we want to spend, you know, you don't want to spend all your funds on one pot when another one's coming down the pike. So trying to balance this information as it comes out is going to be a challenge for us. This does present an opportunity, and I think Mayor Gertz, he has the budget right now, and I think you should be expecting that next week, the end of next week. And Mayor, I thought you, I think you were going to say a few words about how this juxtaposes with the next year's budget.
I'd be glad to, and I appreciate it. So just a preview, at least a little bit of what you'll see when the final i's are dotted and t's are crossed on the budget, that you'll see middle of next week for FY22. You saw that there was the significant transit fund of north of $7 million. We, of course, have talked about leading up to the next T-SPOLOX package. And so what I'll be doing is using north of $3 million to balance the general fund from that transit fund and return us to the 24 route model, kind of in a fair-free environment for the next fiscal year. And then using just a little bit of money from the larger pot in the revenue replacement category. So, you know, fines and fees that we've not received, that we would have expected to have received in FY21, to not only balance the budget, but avoid the prospect of a mileage hike. And just while I'm here, for a couple of other notes, certainly one of the things that I very much want to see for the nonprofit community, for businesses, and for individuals and households, is that in conjunction with some of our community partners, that there's a navigator or facilitator model. Because as Manager Williams mentioned, given that there are all these variety of streams about which we won't know all the information, you know, we just want to make sure that we're drawing down every dollar into the community for the community that possibly can come here. So if they're SAMPSA dollars, for example, as you'd identified, Commissioner, who will, we want to make sure we access those. And then kind of final note, and I'm kind of taking some other notes too. What I heard on the last U.S. Conference of Mayors call that I was on with a member of the Office of Management and Budget from the Biden administration is that the city-county guidance should be coming out about or around May 10th or 15th. So just another calendar item. So thank you, Manager Williams.
Absolutely, Mayor.
Manager Williams, I had to put my dog out real quick, but I'm coming back. And I might have been said this. Do we know how much money we have lost downtown with parking since we've done the parklets?
Well, I will say, we know how much the parking revenues are down versus prior years. You know, mostly attributable to COVID. I'm not sure if that, if you're asking if maybe attributable to parklets. Overall, I would say, since the pandemic, we are aware of how much we're down in parking revenue.
Just share that at a later time with some numbers, so we'll know what we're doing. I think we often overlook the downtown and parking and the revenue it brings in. And that was my point about investing in things that bring us back money. So if you could share that at a later date, I don't want to put you on the spot tonight.
It's my understanding, it's roughly over north of $1 million, but I could be wrong.
That sounds about right. $900,000, $1 million, somewhere in that neighborhood.
Well, we need to kind of figure out if that's how important that is. The other thing, I think this navigate, a lot of the, a lot of other cities and institutions are using navigators for special things, such as housing navigators, healthcare navigators. That is a common approach. I hope that we not, I hope we look at people who are already in the district that are working and not creating these spots and giving people some motivation to move up. I do have some thoughts about that, but I hope we're not just bringing on more people when we could use people in a different way.
Okay. All right. I'll talk more about it.
Did you write that down?
I'm writing it down. I'm looking down, and I'm writing. Well, really, the final slide for y'all, just talking about next steps. And again, to reassure that, you know, the public that there are no imminent decisions, although, you know, it behooves us to move forward and talk about things. Mayor mentioned a mid-May hopefully release of Treasury guidance with relation to the local funds. I want you all to continue to discuss priorities, desired components of the process. We talked a little bit tonight about lenses of sustainability, racial equity. Staff can continue to work on those concepts and share them with you. And again, Commissioner Thornton, just comparison to the resiliency package. If you remember that timeline chart that we made, that I think is very visual, and it helps people understand how the funds are going to be used and for what purposes over what time period. A draft timeline over the next three years. And then certainly, I have no doubt that you've been contacted by constituents, by nonprofits, with a lot of dreams and aspirations about how they could use these funds. And we just don't know. And I think it's important that we manage expectations and be as transparent as we can about what we understand. And so that folks don't begin making plans on information that's not quite accurate. So that, I think that's going to fall to all of us. And so we'll, we'll work through this. We'll discuss things. There'll be future work session, no doubt, as we continue to learn more and refine what our thoughts are.
So, yeah. Andrew Williams, I definitely have been talking to constituents. I have found that a lot of counties and a lot of cities, because of my work, don't even know about this funding. So we are ahead of the curve, at least with the people. I know in the last two weeks, I have talked to, I know over 130-something people between the two community meetings and some of these other meetings I'm involved in. But I've made it real clear that we're still waiting for Treasury guidelines. But also, and very, very, very strong, most of the time, most of the time in past history, when money comes through town, certain folk know and certain folk do not know. I think it behooves all of the commissioners to reach out and at least not create high expectations because we're waiting for guidelines. But we surely do not need to be waiting for the guidelines to at least let people know what is coming down the pike. So, you know, I'm glad we had this conversation tonight. There are people who want to meet with us when we get more information. But some people just want to know. And I think when you don't tell people at least what you know, it has a tendency to look suspect. And we don't want to look suspect. We want to be as transparent as possible.
Excellent point, Commissioner Thornton, and exactly why we're having the meeting tonight. And I would say that we do have some, I mean, we do have it straight from the horse's mouth as far as the legislation and what some eligible areas are. You know, there's more details to come, but we sort of know what we could spend these on. And then I think on some of the priorities that you've articulated, things that we're working on, you were working on before you even knew this was going to happen. So bringing some of those priorities that you've always felt were important, that are needs for the community, and intersecting that with what some of the eligible expenses are, there's no reason we can't advance those conversations to refine ideas. We just have to withhold judgment and final decisions or direction until we know exactly what we're dealing with.
Manager Williams, can I add something to that real quick? And that is, I think it was on, I don't know, I kind of liked your slide. The, what number is it? Number 10, about the comprehensive planned community opportunities. And, you know, just focusing on, I mean, you've said this, we've got to have a focus, but focusing on those guidelines around some of these things. And the red ones look good. So that's my two cents worth on this. I look forward to further discussion.
Can I add something? I really think we need to, like, understand what our real emergency priorities are. The ones where we need to have done something yesterday. And, you know, I believe, first of all, it's the health of this community, trying to stop the spread of COVID, getting folks vaccinated. We need to put that tip-top of the list. And second, you know, I believe it's this emergency homelessness, especially when it comes to encampments and folks getting pushed out off private property. You know, it takes a long time to plan and build actual proper housing, but it doesn't take a long time to set up appropriate, safe, and sanitary campsites. So I really believe that we should identify some county-owned property where we give folks a place to go, give them proper rest, water, even cooking facilities, bathing facilities. So we can start to at least provide some stability to this population while we do come up with more long-term, permanent, stable, proper housing for folks. You know, this is the kind of stuff we can do in the near immediate terms with a small amount of money, you know, and have a plan to do it as soon as that money lands in our pockets. Whereas other things need, you know, lots of community input and lots of planning, lots of development, high-end investment on the front end, infrastructure, you know, all that stuff. So, you know, I really think we should come up with immediate plans for those immediate needs. So when that money lands on us, we are ready to go.
You know, I'm going, I agree with Commissioner Link, as we went out today and we were looking at property. And, you know, she's really good at property. I do think, though, I do think, though, all of us should, all of the commissioners should take this night, this presentation, and talk to all of our constituents, or as many constituents as possible. And then kind of go, kind of come up with our list based on on what we're hearing, not just what we're seeing, but what other people are hearing. So I hope that, first of all, Blaine, let me say this. I do appreciate this presentation. It's very clear, it's like, as much as I know, with the little bit of research that I've been doing unofficially. But it is about engaging the community. That's what, that's my biggest concern. And if this is, these 15 things are our comprehensive planned community activities, this should be a guide for us to move forward. So I'm agreeing with Commissioner Link. But I am so vested in this that, yeah, I kind of jumped the gun a little bit. But all of us should be jumping the gun now because the money's coming. The money is definitely, well, you never know what's going to happen, but it's supposed to be coming. And we just need to make sure we have input from everybody. Now, she brought up about homelessness, and when I look at the list, it's really not even listed. So maybe it should be 16 things on here.
Well, thank you. And I will say this. Admittedly, I refamiliarized myself with the comprehensive plan and putting this together. And there were things in there that I had not, I had forgotten about. And homelessness is definitely within the housing component. I hear you, though, Commissioner Thornton, it needs to be called out. But I would urge you and the public, I think the comprehensive plan is online, and you should have a copy yourselves. On pages 13 through 55, you will find these 15 topics. And under each topic are some very specific goals, strategies, and initiatives. And then from pages 56 through 72 is the community work program. And there are specific projects that were called out with approximate costs and timelines. And I think that's a, it's a good read for all of us to go back and refamiliarize ourselves as we, you know, look to the future. To your point, Commissioner Link, I think we really need to focus on process. You know, if we're going to move things forward quicker, and to Commissioner Thornton's point about community engagement, so what does that look like? And how, you know, and y'all, we deal with this all the time. You deal with this all the time. There are a million ideas out there in various stages of germination. And some people know about some, and some people don't. And how far do you take something before you start to, you know, get it out there? I do think we, you know, it's often been said, we have so many plans that we haven't put into play. put into play. So, there's a number of plans that have had some public input in the past, and maybe as we pull from some of those, using the comprehensive plan, using the lens of equity and sustainability, you know, and then bringing that to the public, I think those are some process components that we really, y'all need to reflect on, and we need to begin to piece together that, and then tell everybody what to expect and how to engage.
You used the comprehensive plan, 15-point list. Is there possible that you could generate a list of other plans and work that we've done? I'm thinking about the East Side, that has been brought up more than one time about the 2004 recommendations. I'm also thinking more recently about the pathways out of poverty study. Is there any way you can list some other plans, just as a sidebar commission, I mean, I'm sorry, you're not a commission, I'm sorry. Manager Williams.
Absolutely, I think that's an excellent idea. And we'll start a list, and you tell us what we're missing. We can load those on the FTP site so that y'all have access to those, and, you know, we can sift through all of that and start to bring out things that seem to make sense and tie together.
I want to say, Commissioners, I really appreciate where everybody is going in both thinking about how so many of these things layer together, the comprehensive plan, past studies, I even think about the priorities that all of us identified in the recent SPOLOST round, and of course, so many of these reflect the commission goals, public engagement is one of those, housing and homelessness, workforce development and economic development, I mean, those are exactly the things that all of you have been talking about. And I'm particularly happy to hear everybody being so kind of forward-looking and thinking, you know, how do we create some permanent benefits, and really like Commissioner Thornton's notion of, you know, how do we even look at this as being revenue-enhancing, and I would hope, wealth-enhancing for the community too. So, this is great.
Blaine, can you please put health in red? I mean, the whole reason we're in this place is because of a public health crisis, and that crisis has really impacted certain demographics much more severely, and that highlights, you know, a public health crisis beyond the COVID virus. So, I really think that that should be one of those, I mean, first of all, just for the urgency of vaccination needs alone, I believe that should be one of the top priorities. We need to get our, stop the spread of the virus, get our population healthy, and really address the source of those health disparities that have led to such high hospitalization and death rates in people of color.
Absolutely. And I would say, and there's no legend here, but the reason there's four red was I was just linking what you've already been talking about this past year. Obviously, y'all have been, you've spent millions of dollars in community relief, so that's been a priority for you. But out of the retreat, I thought it was interesting just to kind of connect those back to the community comp plan. So, I do think, Commissioner Link, there's a next iteration of you articulating priorities for this funding, and, you know, if that's the consensus of the group, health will become one of those.
If I could just make a couple of quick comments, too, and some of that in the direction of what Commissioner Lake's saying. I do, we have this window of time here where we're in a bit of a holding pattern as we wait for the Treasury direction, but I think it would be best for us to use that time wisely, and I see a few things that we could do. One is definitely getting back to those immediate needs. I think we have almost three categories, I think a long-term, short-term, but also immediate needs. And those immediate needs definitely encompass vaccine rollout, vaccine distribution, which while I know that we've done well here in Athens, I think we all know that there's a lot more that we could be doing, and that we could be doing, I would like us to see doing an overabundance when it comes to the vaccine rollout. So, I would love, and so that on the immediate need, I see the vaccine rollout, definitely as preparing for the end of the eviction moratorium, which right now is scheduled for June, because I think that some people have definitely gotten to the thing, the thinking that eviction moratorium means evictions aren't happening, but really just means that they're being put off until they all happen at the same time. Texas just went ahead and has ruled the moratorium unconstitutional, so now all of a sudden cities across Texas are now having to deal with thousands and thousands, hundreds of thousands of evictions all at the same time. And that's, we can really look at that, how terrifying that is, and that is going to happen in Georgia, just after CDC eviction moratorium's over. So, taking some of the steps like with the Project Reset, I know we have the RFP ready, and that's fantastic, but like, taking some steps to that, that is ready for the money that's there, so it can be rolled out as fast as possible. And then also, I think something we could be using and doing in that holding pattern time, is having our new grant writers working on some of those other funds that we know that we could get, but we are not guaranteed to get, because it's going to be very competitive getting those funds, I'm sure. So, I'd love any kind of head start that we could have there. And then the last thing, I was thinking, going to Commissioner Thornton and other people talking about just having some community engagement and community information, working with our Public Information Office to have somewhat of a simple survey that can be distributed that still keeps expectations where they should be, and maybe works off of that list or something like that, but so that we can just get some feedback, and people feel like they are having some kind of a say and some kind of window into the process. Our Public Information Office has been doing, growing a lot in that capacity, doing those surveys, so I think maybe something like that could be put together, and we could all be distributing that, and having that go around, and I'm sure the press would talk about it too, so that people could get involved there. But since we have this month or so that we're going to have to wait, let's make the best of it.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Commissioner Lake.
Oh, yeah, I just want to add, I know PIO is overwhelmed, I mean, they're dealing with all these meetings. We might want to consider hiring an outside marketing agency to help us with our public engagement, and also, like, general communication and advertisement of some of these initiatives, including vaccination rollouts.
Another budgetary preview, you will see a community engagement role in the budget for next year.
Well, Commissioner, go ahead. No, I'm sorry, I can't see everybody.
Yeah, I just wanted to bring up, again, with going with the public engagement, I've been doing a lot of listening, taking notes here and thinking, and are we, with this huge amount of money, are we thinking of how we're going to get citizens involved in the sort of transparency, oversight, involvement with this? Do we have any ideas along the way? You know, we have SPOLOST committees and committees for citizen resident committees, and I'm wondering how we're going to get the community involved, as much for making this as transparent as possible, and as diverse in terms of involvement here. And then two, just on a really practical level, this presentation that you had, I mean, I'd like to have us to have as many ways to get this information out to the public, whether or not it's your PowerPoint that you just had here, Blaine, and maybe thinking, well, how could, if you could just shape that a little bit in, so that's something that, well, first of all, if we could attach that to the agenda, that would be wonderful for today's agenda, so that people can see it. But I'd also like to sort of have a sort of a public version of that that I could use if I choose to have an online town hall to share the ideas, whether it's that or to link it to a newsletter, or some other ways to engage the public. So, it's just that public engagement and transparency that I'm thinking about right now.
And I can tailor it however you like, but by all means, feel free to spread this far and wide, we tried to write it for that purpose.
Okay. And how about citizen, a broader or more, are there any thoughts and plans on a more formal, let's say, citizen involvement in this, since what do we have, five, four years to spend the money?
Three and a half.
Three and a half years. So, we have our eyes on so many things, and sometimes with the citizen committees, if they can just have their eyes on one thing, I think that's helpful, and also helpful for getting, like I said, transparency here with the community.
Mayor Gertz, when you send out your budget, can I get a hard copy from Gene?
Definitely.
Thank you.
Jesse.
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, a few thoughts here. I think regarding equity and community input, I'd love to get the Justice and Memory Committee's input, kind of per our Lindon Town Resolution that we passed recently, get their take formally looped into this process for how we utilize these funds, I think that would be important for us to do sooner than later. I agree with my colleagues about health and vaccines being a top priority to add to the list right now in terms of the immediate, for sure. And kind of piggybacking on what Commissioner Denson was saying about evictions, I think we also need to recognize that evictions are still happening now, and that a program like Project Reset can help with those as well. The moratorium is only holding off a certain number of evictions. However, many people who, for whatever reason, don't qualify or don't successfully navigate the CDC process to qualify for the moratorium are still facing eviction now, and will continue to. So, the sooner we can get that off the ground, the better. And, sorry, I wrote real tiny here. So, when we're thinking of kind of the intersection of safety and health, I'll just refer again to getting a Kahoot-style program going here, I think now is a really great opportunity for us to leverage these funds to do that, and intersects with both of those domains. You know, with mental health crises, I think we need to recognize that not every emergency is a police emergency, and so another thing we can do in the interim right now is find a good framework for identifying, you know, where the gaps are, and which calls are law enforcement calls, and which calls would really best be handled by a more medical and mental health care-based team, so that we're, once we have the funding to actually put that structure in place, we've already got it kind of mapped out, you know, exactly what they're going to be doing and how they're going to integrate with the good work already being done with co-responder units and such. And the last thing I wrote down here was about, you know, I've heard from different nonprofits that it's been, what's the word I would use here? Challenging, I guess, it's been kind of, it's been hard to feel like, I think the way we got our CARES money, having to use it immediately on a short timeline and not really knowing when it was coming, and the way it all got hung up in the state, has been kind of a dizzying process. And when we have this four-year timeline mapped out, I think another thing that we might could do while we're waiting to know exactly how this funding can be used, is ask nonprofits, both who have applied and not received funding, and who have applied and received funding, what about our process has worked and what could be modified? Because the sense I get is that setting up a more sustainable process to partner with nonprofits in the community is something that's really needed, and getting this large a sum of money with this long of a timeline to use it over might be a great way for us to map that out. And that could include perhaps like establishing some kind of tiering system for the size of nonprofit agencies, so we have kind of our startup size, and then our very large agencies that can move large sums of money very quickly and effectively. And then there's kind of this mid-level size, where I think like traditional CDBG funds and stuff, it's almost like not worth it to apply for what ends up just being like a small amount of money for them, but they don't necessarily qualify for some of the really big bucket stuff. And so, does that make sense, kind of what I'm describing there, Manager Williams? Okay, happy to talk about that more, because I talked plenty right now, but, yeah, thanks.
Patrick?
Yes, okay. So, I like the, everyone's firing off and got some great ideas and stuff, but I do want to just let my colleagues know that we really need to work with what we got, because we seem like we have some programs that we talk about that we just need to expand on them, or add more definition to them, so just, you know, keep that in mind, let's work with what we got. But for me, I would just like, just for a high-level overview, I wrote some notes, and just bear with me, and Blaine, County Manager, please don't write this down, but I just think, so I've actually listened to some of the constituents, I've not listened to all, but just from neighborhood associations, and just random people in District 1. So, and of course, equity is top of everyone's list, but a lot of people would like to see the money go back to the city, because we think, there's some residents who feel that money can be better used, if it goes back into our coffers and help fund some of the balances that have been out there due to COVID. So, right now, a quick list, so city infrastructure roads, especially roads in, you know, black neighborhoods with speed bumps and stuff, or traffic calming, stormwater parks and trails, let's get those out of the way and fix, you know, our pools, and complete some of these sidewalks, traffic calming, street paving, replacing old road signs, traffic lights, sidewalks, cohorts, leisure services, disability services, homeless shelter, homeless service, homeless shelter, homeless service, homeless shelter and homeless service, and workforce development, business incubation funds to help the classic center, because they do generate money, CBB, homeless services, homeless shelter, homeless services, homeless shelter, expanding the sewer lines, and ACC, something we've talked about in the past, you know, helping recover revenue loss, solid waste, recycling, airport, home weatherization, we talked about it in the past, you know, home improvement, you know, supplement ADDA, homeless services, and homeless shelter, homeless service, and homeless shelter.
I perceived a theme emerging there, Commissioner.
Thank you. It's hard to pass after all that in-depth words from Commissioner Davenport. Mine's more process-oriented, the feedback I wanted to share or the suggestion as we're moving forward with the budget. If we can have information, remember when we used to have charts that would say, this qualifies for SPOLOST, this qualifies for T-SPOLOST, so that we knew how our funding, when we were making decisions from the general fund or enterprise funds, so that as we're moving forward, if we can start having some sort of symbol, or asterisk, or column, that says, does not qualify for the American Rescue Plan, possibly, I don't know, if we can start making notes, if staff can start making notes, so as we go through the budget process, we can, I hope, focus our general funds on what is not eligible for these pots of money, and that as we learn it, you know, we can apply it and then have that with our discussions. Manager Williams, does that sound like something that we can have staff keep track of as they learn more?
It's an excellent idea. So, we can create a matrix of these projects as they roll out and begin to say eligible uses of funding, and that might help you choose between two hard decisions, if one might be more eligible, I mean, eligible, also eligible for the T-SPOLOST, for instance, you know, then you can push that there and then push this one here, so you're kind of keeping a running list of where things are.
Right, and I know that T-SPOLOST is already designated, and SPOLOST 2020 is already designated, so I'm not trying to monkey around with those, I was just using that as an example of how we were prioritizing things. But I guess some of those buckets are general, you're right, some of those buckets are general in nature.
I was looking forward to next year, actually. I think T-SPOLOST 2023 will be on the, or 2022 will be on next year's referendum, so at the end of this year, we'll be talking about such things.
Well, and we might be talking about how we don't need to have an extension of, if we have this, in this opportunity in here, so it could be that we take a break from Again, that's what I meant, if we know what, how they qualify for, I think that revenue generating is going to help the community, and then also having some breaks in some ways, and that penny would be a break for a lot of people.
I'll share, just as I looked at the general fund capital expenditures, one of the lenses I looked at is, you know, what could potentially be American Rescue Plan eligible, that also wouldn't be a continuing expense too, so thinking along the same lines.
Sounds like you've got the lens, and so then if it gets to where it's, has a visual communication as we talk about stuff, or that column, so that... communication as we talk about stuff or that column, so that as long as you guys are taking notes and then we'll be ready with, share notes and make sure we're clear on what we perceive as being applicable and make sure that we're all on the same page on what is, as we learn more. Thanks, appreciate the presentation today.
Thanks Allison. Back to you Patrick.
One more thing, I forgot to mention affordable housing, but if we fix what's broken now with leisure services and all this stuff, we won't have to use so much of the T-SPOLOST and so much of the general fund. So I just want to, you know, plug in people's minds that if this was broken now, it's been broken for a while and some of the projects we've been working on for the past four years, you know, since we're getting these federal dollars, let's get those fixed so we can put less strain on our budgets as well as we'll have a long, another 10-year, 12-year T-SPOLOST to cover some of these issues that we have in our community.
Thanks for that.
Sounds like prepare what's there to me.
Any other summary thoughts?
Well Mayor, if I might, just want to close the loop on something. So I know several you, many of you have been interested in this Project Reset concept that we've talked about. I wanted to be careful and for us not to get ahead of this discussion, talking to the public, everybody understanding. But there, you know, if that is something that you're interested in with that program that is a model here in Georgia, eviction relief and without putting a number on it, going ahead and positioning ourselves to identify a partner to run that, you know, we've talked with the magistrate court, they're unable to administer that and do the work that they do. So it would require an outside party to help facilitate that. So we can, if you agree as a body, we'll go ahead and solicit interest and see where that takes us and then you can decide later on in full view of, you know, we can have that teed up without any commitments and then when the money comes down, you can decide as a body if you want to pursue that further.
And I guess a note connected to that is, of course, that's a scalable activity and again, as you saw in the presentation, potentially one that could draw from other funding pools too.
Georgia Legal Services currently have a program for, to help people, Georgia Legal Service Program of Georgia currently has a program similar to Project Reset and I'll provide my colleagues more information and they, so it's up and running now, give them a call and they work with lawyers throughout the state and they got federal.
But they don't give, cover the rent, overdue rent, do they?
Say it one more time?
They mostly help with court stuff, they don't necessarily have the funding to pay the overdue rents.
Yeah, they do have, they do have funds to help cover for overdue rents. They do have some funds for that, but it's not a lot.
Yeah, so we'll, I think, I'm definitely interested in Project Reset and helping folks, you know, who have fallen behind on rent and even mortgages, you know, this past year as they've been unemployed.
Jesse, Allison?
Yeah, my understanding is that Georgia Legal Services is definitely probably an agency we'd want to contact to see if and how they'd want to be involved for sure, but they don't have the resources already to be doing this kind of program. So they would definitely need like the funding and support infrastructurally. And I guess I'm wondering, do we need to like make a motion or is the general nodding in this meeting sufficient to take that next step?
I just want to hear the feedback from all the commissioners and see, you know, what the general consensus was. There's no expenditure of funds, it's just soliciting interest.
Allison?
I think that it would be beneficial of us to all be learning from the same page and presentation if we had a work session that covered what Commissioner Davenport's talking about, talking about what Commissioner Denson clearly has studied more than others and what some people, some people's interpretation of what they study on their own time is one thing and I think that having staff put the, you know, the pros and cons together and let us know the difference between them and how that would work with the partner. Obviously, if we need an agency for that, Manager Williams, it seems like you would be able to present to us what you might come up with at first time or I just don't want to miss the opportunity for a partner in our community to team up with us, for us to assume that there's a specific avenue for these things to happen. And so if we learn it in a work session where we can discuss it together or chew on it and then discuss it and then partner, people in the community know what we're looking at and it can allow some other avenues to come forward perhaps. But that's my take on that, similar to how we've learned about hostile architecture and friendly, age-friendly architecture all at the same time. So if we can bring that forward and then also learning how some of this funding would be able to work in tandem with that, that'd be, I think, a good approach for all of us because we don't have all commissioners here and I think that it would be inappropriate for us to do head nods on a decision-making thing at a work session.
I agree with Allison and I'm nodding my head.
And just in terms of process note, Blaine, what you were describing was a request for interest, is that it, not an allocation?
Well, that's correct, but, yeah, that's correct. We would be soliciting interest for a partner, but I understand that there's more information that we can share.
Couple other folks, Commissioner Edwards?
I, I'm most excited about the infrastructure improvements we might be able to make with some of these funds, projects that have been long delayed, that our citizens have really been looking forward to, you know, we've passed a lot of concepts. So this funding can give us the ability to really fast-forward some of these physical improvements to the infrastructure of our city that benefits not just the citizens but our economic development goals and our tourism goals. So I know there's a lot of great projects in the hopper that could be moved forward quickly with this influx from the federal government. So I'm most excited about that aspect of this, thanks.
Thanks Russell. And Carolyn, Tim, as we move toward wrapping up. Tim? Thought I saw your hand up, I'm sorry, you might have just been writing.
Okay, yeah, if, if, yeah. Do you?
Yeah, well, actually, now that Russell brought that up, I just want to clarify something here. When I'm looking at the eligible expenses, I guess this is what we know right now for the infrastructure, it says water, sewer, broadband. Looking at that now is our understanding that other investments in infrastructure and roads, bridges, sidewalks, bike lanes, et cetera, et cetera, are they, would they be excluded from this, the ARP funds then?
Well, obviously we're awaiting guidance and so I think there's a lot of unknowns here. I do like to think expansively and so if I was to frame an infrastructure project as a health-enhancing project, that would be something that I'd be interested in if the federal government would think similarly expansively. I think there are probably some that we can clearly say would not be eligible based on the language, but again, we're just waiting for some guidance. And stormwater, I think Blaine mentioned earlier, the last call that I was on, as soon as I typed into the chat, you know, does sewer include storm sewer? There were 20 other mayors that asked the same question, so that's clearly one on lots of communities' minds.
And to that point, Mayor, you and I were discussing Commissioner Thornton sent in some of her information she sent out last day or so. The National League of Cities has seven or eight main principles that they're trying to convey to Congress as they talk about recovery legislation and, you know, there's also been talk of an infrastructure bill and it does talk of transportation and connectivity, you know, workforce development, you know, parks and neighborhoods and basically Commissioner Davenport did a great job of naming the National League of Cities priorities. And so that is what a lot of other cities of America are hoping that will come with even, you know, with other assistance from the federal government too.
I was just going to say quickly, if, like I understand us commissioners wanting to have a process around before we pursue RFP for Project Reset, if that's the path we're going to go, which I completely understand, please, let's have that on the May agenda for a work session then, because just knowing our cycle, it has to be then so that we can actually vote on it in June or actually have RFPs out, so basically, so this program is actually in place when the eviction moratorium ends on June 30th. And not to count all the evictions that Commissioner Hull brought up. And we have spent millions of dollars in homeless and indigent assistance as we should during this pandemic, but the most effective way to spend that money is not let people become homeless in the first place. Every one of those evictions that happens is a family that's kicked out of their home. And you want to talk about something that shakes up a person, I mean, all those people end up being homeless, maybe temporarily, maybe permanently, people sleeping, children sleeping on couches. We're going to use that money effectively, let's have the least amount of impact on those families in our community and let's stop the evictions from happening, which are happening right now. Commissioner Hull is correct, there are, the sheriff is currently every single week putting out disposessory orders and evictions. I actually mailed out today, this afternoon, three more copies of the CDC eviction moratorium to a person called me, said they don't know how to get through it and they don't have access to a printer, and I have mailed it to their address, they can actually fill those things out and give them to their landlord and take to the magistrate court. These are happening right now. And I brought up this program back in December last year, I mean, Gwinnett County rolled it out very effectively and Bautista Cobb County's copied it, Fulton County's copied it, Clayton County's copied it, the whole state of Georgia's copied it, is a proven effective thing, it's also being done in Michigan. We've had lots of time to be able to get on this and to learn about it and so I understand that, but let's, please, let's expedite this so that we can use this money effectively and keep people in their homes. So I really, really hope and expect it to be on the work session for May then.
It's easily doable. Jesse?
Thank you Mayor. Yeah, I mean, that, I want to convey the immediacy and, you know, we have been talking about this vaguely for months and months now. I don't, like, we're talking, we're in a work session now, talking about it. We can have, we're having the discussion now. Everybody but one commissioner is here and the one commissioner Parker, who's absent, I know, is very much in favor of moving this forward immediately. So there's no reason, I don't see, for us to drag it out right now. So like, I guess I'm curious, like, is there like a need for more discussion to move forward at the next step? You were talking about Manager Williams with an RFP. And if that is the case, then my ask is that it's on our agenda-setting meeting on Tuesday, even if it's a title-only and we can vote on it at the voting meeting in May. I mean, people are being evicted every day right now and we could be doing something about it. We complain about homelessness all the time, everyone on this body makes all this noise about homelessness. And people are homeless because they get evicted and we could be preventing that and we're not. So we need to stop dragging our feet on this.
Are we still talking about the RAP, ARP money or has the agenda shifted to something else?
We're talking about having the infrastructure in place and use the ARP money.
Commissioner Hull, I was directing my question to the mayor.
Obviously, we've got a set of uses for which ARP is going to be eligible and it seems pretty clearly that the housing homelessness arena is among them. And so certainly I think among the things that I'd identify is that we do want to know what the landscape is of aid that exists, including the insufficiencies of the aid that exists. So if there's some programs operating, but they don't provide everything that the community needs, we need to know that, we need that gap analysis as we do in some other areas as well. But I think we can draw together that view for everybody, so, you know, people know in common, what is the state providing through the Department of Community Affairs-funded program, what the level of disposessory hearings are locally, I think that's pretty easy to draw together for everyone. All right, any concluding thoughts? All right, everybody, the presentation from tonight is in your email box, I do encourage you to spread that widely, I'm going to post it on the Mayoral Facebook so that everybody has access to that who's on the web. All right, this has been helpful to get some of your kind of broad thoughts about both process and topical priorities. Manager Williams, thanks for drawing this together pretty quickly and definitely without all the information that we would certainly like to be able to have at our disposal. Again, it's looking like within a month, we will have some more federal guidance. So Manager Williams, anything else for the good of the group before we head out?
I appreciate the feedback and y'all continue to share information, thank you.
All right, y'all get something to eat while the daylight's still shining.
Thank you. Good night y'all.
Thanks.